Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the McIntosh County Board of Education's work session for November sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. If you would, please stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Most gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you for this day. We thank you for the school system, the administration, the staff, and all who contribute to this community to help educate our children. We ask your continued blessings and prayers as they seek to further everyone's education here in community and harmony. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three, citizens address the board. Number four, approval of the work session agenda. Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Well, somebody say something.
All right, motion by Mr. McIver.
Second.
Second by Mr. Straggles. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero.
My word.
All right, um, items of information, Dr. Williams.
All right, well, we just had, a couple of weeks ago, our first quarterly data reviews. So we cover areas like attendance, discipline, PBIS data, um, school improvement goal updates. We met with every principal all in one day, so it was a, it was a marathon that day, wasn't it, team? But we went to every school and they presented their data to us. They talked about what was going on with tutoring, what was going on with failures. They gave us failures by courses, by grade levels, by teachers, like where their concerns are, um, discipline by grades. We got a couple of grades that have a lot of discipline issues, so we're working on that. And then I know that since then, Ms. Riles has participated in two walkthroughs. Did you get, was McNair, just you?
Just me.
Okay, so they did visible learning and PBIS walkthroughs at the elementary school and the middle school.
And both of those were very successful. Um, a lot of glows. We've come a long way and I'm really proud of the progress that we are making. Um, we do have some areas that we're working on some feedback, specifically, um, student to student, um, student to teacher, um, those areas. And, um, using those dispositions, they know the dispositions, but linking them into the actual learning process. Um, we want to focus more on that and also on them using success criteria to gauge their learning. They can tell you what it is, they know where it is, but just getting them to actually use it now and gauge their level of learning. But, um, PBIS walkthrough was very good.
Very good. And so the day or two following our meetings with principals, my team met to discuss what we had heard, how we could help the schools and where we needed to put some IPLs in or things we needed to do, so. Anybody at Masa or McNair, y'all have anything y'all want to add to that?
I think to follow up, we, there may have been a problem. It was really good. Gave us a time to kind of soak things in, then we get feedback for the next steps. And if you follow up with the principal.
I did. Cause we asked some questions about TEACs and I've given the principals timelines for having TEACs completed, so I came back and you inspect what you expect, so I did my little reports and then sent all them emails. So I have one school that was where they needed to be, one right where they needed to be, and one not where they needed to be, so. Y'all got emails from me.
Cool.
And they're on it. They are on it. All right, so that was our QDRs. Um, the Buck Talk Show at MCA, that was last Monday. I stopped there. They had an eight o'clock for juniors and seniors and Ms. Barnes with our, she's our communities and schools person. She is doing an excellent job. She put this together. She had six or seven either recent college students or recent, or college students now or recent college graduates. And they talked to our students. And it was nice for the students to hear from somebody not an adult, like, well, an adult, but still close to their age. Um, it went a lot better than I think she anticipated. She was a little nervous when I walked in. I said, please don't be nervous. I'm just here to get some pictures for Facebook. And so, and then today I had a meeting with CS, with CIS. Um, it was a legislative breakfast. They had several legislators there. They had the governor's office there. Um, and then two employees with communities and schools from the Atlanta office were there for just, you know, talk about what we're doing and then encourage our legislators to give us some more money. So that's what, that's what I was for. All right, so that's my student success update.
All right, our next item is our board policy DIB, which is our finance. It's a few things Ms. Tammy needed to add to it. It's, um, been on the table.
No comments or so. It's been under review with no comments.
Okay. All right. And then number two, discussion of contracting with E-Rate Consultant.
Tammy, you're Rusty. Who talking about that? Rusty's talking about that. I had both their names listed, so.
So, the E-Rate Consultant that we've been using for the last fourteen or fifteen years, who Manning has retired. And he sent us that notice, um, a few weeks ago. So Tammy and I emailed around, got the names of several other consultants. We've reviewed four of them. Um, there's one that we both come to a consensus on. We'd like to give Richie that contract to review it to move forward. Right now, just so you guys are aware, our current consultant that is retiring, he said, go help us on anything that they have filled out the paperwork on and helped us apply for and get funding for. But after that stuff pays without, he's completely done, which means we're going into the application process for next year's E-Rate, um, right now. So we need to go ahead and make a decision, um, in the middle of November to go ahead and start the consulting. Any questions?
Is the cost for the new one comparable to what it has been?
Significantly cheaper.
Oh?
Well, like that.
That person has, um, several good references. So, just so you guys are aware, what I did is I emailed, we have a state tech list. And I emailed every technology director in the state and said, hey, who are you using? I compiled the ones I saw the most names of with good recommendations. I reached out to them and said, hey, can you help us with some proposing contracts? Then Tammy and I reviewed the four that we liked the best and we gave us a consensus on the one.
And they didn't look at those at the same time. They looked at those independently of each other and they both agreed on that one, so.
Oh, cool. That's great.
Great minds think alike.
Yep.
Okay, number three, transfer of eight hundred thousand if needed from the local projects account to general operating account.
So, just because we pay out early in November before the holidays, we have not started receiving tax money yet. I anticipate we will, but I don't know how much yet, since I know I just got my tax bill, so I don't know how fast those mortgage companies are turning taxes around. So, uh, and the state money does, still doesn't drop until November thirtieth, so I wanted to have a backup plan just in case. We were short of funds, so we could pay out that early and pay, pay one.
Okay.
And rather than take it out of the account where we're earning all the interest, we don't need all that money in the projects account right now, so we'll just move it in and move it out. If we do this.
Okay.
Sounds good. All right, and then, um, item four is discussion of our minutes from our previous meetings. Just take a look at those. Let Ms. Lane or Dr. Williams know. And number five is our finance report.
Turn the page.
It's empty.
Oh, that was it.
All right, the general operating account, October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. We began the month with one point five million. We had receipts of one point two, just under one point two eight billion, and dispersments of one point seven, not, yeah, one point seven million, leaving us with one point one million in the general operating account. Onto page thirty-four, the next page, trustee, total revenues for the general fund. Um, we have period to date revenues through October thirty-first of two point one million, which is twelve percent of our budgeted seventeen point eight million dollars. General fund expenditures, page thirty-six. Uh, total expenditures period to date in the general fund is four point, almost four point four million, which is twenty-three point six percent of our budgeted eighteen point five million. And changes in fund equity on page forty-one. We currently, at, at October thirty-first, we have one point seven six million in the general operating account, in the general fund, I'm sorry. School nutrition, page one hundred and fifteen, three hundred ninety-one thousand, five hundred fifty-five dollars in the school nutrition account. School nutrition fund balance, page one twenty-three, three hundred and five thousand. Local projects, page one hundred and twenty-seven, one point eight million. Money market account, one hundred and thirty, just over a million. And debt service, page one thirty-two. Um, these loss receipts for the month was a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and three dollars. Um, there was, it was an increase over the same time period last year of two percent. And the ending fund balance in the, uh, Georgia Fund One account is two point nine million. Um, any questions?
Ask him while Tammy's here.
We'll save him. Yeah, if you comment with any questions, just email Ms. Tammy, I guess during the week. All right, our next item, facilities and operations. Mr. Masa.
Great evening, board. It's a pleasure to stand before you tonight. Um, start off with the Oak Grove project. I'm really excited. I know we keep saying each week, the only thing that's really keeping us from completing that project and him going into warp drive is they're waiting on the doors. That is a supply change. That's, um, all the storefront doors have been ordered. We're just waiting on the actual glass and the frames for that. The last step is a meeting with, um, Mr. Mixon and the general contractor there tomorrow to make sure that we're on the same page about the color on the bottom. The tabby is all the way up around the top, it's looking really sharp. And we want to make sure that we're, got the right paint sample and the right match for that bottom to match the red that is the brick, so. That's coming along famously. I, I'm really excited about that. And we'll also talk about the concrete. When we first had a, a proposal, it wasn't quite what we wanted for how that concrete pathway is going to go, so we asked him to redo some drawings and he submitted that and we've got the PO in order, so hopefully concrete, um, the beginning of next week is, um, what we're hoping for. That's that pathway that's going to lead from the stairs to a be, beautiful circle with a flagpole, all the way to the parking lot and over to Oak Grove, so. Everything's coming together. Just got to wait on those doors is the, the last key hinge pinch, hinge pin for that, that project. Now, we're rarely conscious about oak trees. As you can see, we planted nine beautiful oak trees over there in the, um, Oglethorpe Square revitalization project. However, what's happened, one of our oak trees right at the walkway coming into the middle school, you know that we have that new gate and that new fence that, that blocks off right where we used to park and you walk through. Right there, we have an oak tree that has twisted and is in really bad repair. And it actually dropped a limb that dropped so hard that it crushed the concrete right there. Not a huge repair or anything, not a big deal. But the tree is failing and you can see where it's twisted and where eventually that tree is going to, um, possibly fall. You know, oak trees are a hard one to judge. It could last ten years, it could last ten minutes. We don't know, but with the professionals of tree cutters that came out and looked, if you cut off the part that's twisted, then the tree's so unbalanced and so gangly looking that, um, it's best that we take that tree down. It's not going to affect the look. It's still going to be a canopy right there. And I think those other oak trees will, um, eventually make that site e- even more beautiful than it is now, so. That's something that we want to take a look at is going ahead and being proactive and taking that tree down before it drops another limb. You're welcome to meet over there at any time and take a look. And you, when you look at it yourself, you'll see that the tree is in, in really bad, um, disarray. Happened to be that Mr. Straggles was driving by and I waved him down, so he's had a chance to look at it if anybody else wants to. Um, I'd be glad to show that to you. And then there is one other tree that is a dead tree behind the shop at the, the maintenance shop. It's dead and it's a big, big tree and it's posed to possibly hit the building if it falls down. And we'd like to take that down. This, we've gotten two quotes on that. Um, it's not a, not a considerable amount of money. I think it was thirty-five hundred dollars, thirty-eight hundred dollars for the tree at the middle school and a little less for the tree behind the, um, workshop, so. Those two trees, I think, um, should, should go. So, the girls and boys club, man, I tell you what, they are grant finding organization. Every time I turn around, they find a grant and so proud of them for that. And they've come up with a grant for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The only unfortunate part about it is it's really restricted, restricted to what we can do with it. And a hundred thousand dollars of that grant is for lighting. And it's, come to find out, it's not easy to spend a hundred thousand dollars on lighting when you really don't need lighting. So, we've scoured the area and we've looked at where we could, um, possibly, because they are open, especially in a night like tonight, they're not open until six thirty or so, seven o'clock, that, um, where we can make it better in the front. So we got a couple ideas, but it's not, um, something that we'll be able to, um, spend all that money unless. We did, um, come up with an idea that possibly they use our football field and those lights out on the football field and the grant is about replacing lights and um, so we are getting a quote on LED lights for the football field, but it will be on their grant, you know, and it's, so we'll see how that plays out. We, uh, we know that our LED lights at the football field, there's a lot more of them on our main football field than there are. There's still four poles, but there's a lot less lights and possibly they could come in within the, um, grant amount and we end up getting some, um, quality security lighting on our football field.
That's how it needs to be worded.
That's how we are going to address that. But if that doesn't play out, we're gonna do our best to, to find some ways. It has a couple thousand dollars for some security, um, upgrades that we can use. And Rusty and I are working through those with doors and, um, locks and, and things of that nature. So, again, kudos to our girls and boys club for going out of the, uh, and finding these grants and then actually acquiring them, so that, that's great. We'll see if we can partner up with them and benefit from them. What they've asked for, just as a side note, is so that you guys know what's coming, that if we can find something that we can, um, pay for with this grant, they've asked for maybe a sidewalk that comes out of their building, right out of their doors, um, so that they're not tracking mud in. I think it helps us. And a little sidewalk going out to a little parking area for them, so. Um, I'll come back to you when we get to that point and see if we can't make that happen to, um, help the girls and boys club out, but more so than that, to help our building out and keeping it, um, mud free and, and dirt free. So, we'll see when that comes through. We've had a couple complaints and I'll just say it as a complaint about our cleaning crew and, and what's going on with, um, Southern Cleaning. Um, we had a meeting today with all the directors and we talked through a, a plan. And Ms. Franklin is working through all the numbers and making sure that is this cost-saving measure worth what we're getting and, and weighing all of our options. But I want you to know that, um, we are actively addressing every issue that comes through. I'm gonna stand here and say that Southern Cleaning has a, a lot of good points. Yes, it's, it's easy to see some of the areas that might have needed more attention, but there's a million other areas that are getting done and it, and it's a hard job and especially keeping the crew that is working that job employed and keeping, um, people in that position is difficult. And um, the one advantage or the one, one of the advantages of having a, a company that do that, they take care of all that, the hiring, the firing, the, the um, day-to-day operations of it. But you know, Ms., Dr. Williams said it right. When she cuts that check or signs that check every month, they gotta step up to the plate and do the job that we're paying for. So we're gonna work through some of that with them while we check our other options and know that, um, we've got a plan and, um, I think that we're gonna get our principals more involved and myself more involved, so hopefully we'll see a, a big change in that and i- if not, we will make the needed adjustments moving forward. So, that, that is on our radar and we will take care of it. Teachers got to come into a clean room and we understand that. The last order of business I'm gonna have Mr. McNair help me out with this one is the school-based health clinic. Um, Mr. McNair, why don't you start us off with where we are with that?
All right, all right.
I see Rusty let you have your slides.
Yeah, he, he did. I, I went, he said, oh my God, you're sending slides again. We had an opportunity to visit with, um, Ms. Cheryl Wood, who's the chief operating officer of Coastal Community Health and Mr. John Williams of John Williams Construction. And so they came out last Thursday morning to visit with us and actually look at the site, talk about some of the changes that needed to be made. And one of the changes, before I get into my quick PowerPoint, is that uh, Mr. Masa and I got over there pretty early. And one of the things that we talked about is the logistics of the clinic itself. What was gonna be the most cost-effective, but at the same time the safest route for our kids? And one of the things that we came up with, you want to go ahead and talk to them about it? I think it's on one of the, um, slides. Let me just go to the end. There it is, there.
So, this is a slide of how the clinic is gonna look and, and it's, it's very basic. If you remember, when you walk into the foyer of the, uh, Todd Grant, there's a door that goes right into that conference room. So you could go right into the conference room from that door. And right there, if you can imagine, a big countertop, a knee, knee-high, where it's a countertop for the, the, um, receptionist and then a countertop on top, kind of like what you're seeing right there. So you walk in, a student walks in, there's a reception area. And around the wall, there'll be, uh, there would be chairs and a sitting area. But thinking about that, when we thought about it, if a student wanted to come in, they would have to leave the building, go into the foyer there and then come in. So we did some adjustments. And you see the second door on the right. The second door is within the, um,
Quad doors.
In the front door. So you're in the building when you get into that, that second door. So, and I want you to just flip that knee wall around to the other side. So they walk in through the building, there's the receptionist and the room is behind them. And still a door that goes into the nurse's clinic. So, the layout is exactly the same except for, um, it being reversed, meaning that the kids will come in, they'll never have to go out into the foyer. No parents are gonna be able to come in. They're gonna have to check in and go into the building if they wanted to pick up their student from the nurse. Um, so it's just a lot more secure and, um, I think it's a, a better flow for, for that situation. But, um, we've met with two contractors already. We got a price on one and we got a price on a second, on a second contractor. They were very close, within a thousand dollars of each other for, for the project, so I think we got a good deal. And it just so happens that the second contractor works with the clinic, um, and he's done clinics exactly like the one we're, we're doing and he's got a history of it. So, um, without any further, you know, we're asking, making sure, checking references and possibly we'll go ahead.
Yeah, and that's what I'm doing right now. I did reach out to Ms. Woods to get further information on their contractor, um, just the due diligence part. I want to know about the jobs, how he's done on previous projects and things like that, and I'm waiting to hear back from him. Um, because again, this is a big project for us. Even though there's gonna be some renovations in there, we're gonna be changing the ins- inside structure of that particular area. We want to make sure it's done right. I want to have it set up and then come back and be trying to make, uh, the necessary adjustments, so. Again, this is a big thing for us. I'm, I'm really excited. I, I, I talk about it all the time. I've moved from special ed director to school health person and this is, this, I'm, I'm getting really excited about it. And the reason I'm excited about it is because when I talked to Ms. Woods about it, she said, what are you gonna name? And I said, it's the Tiger Clinic. So they talked about putting a big logo on one of the walls there, so when you walk in there and something maybe on the outside, so when people are driving around, they can see that this is the Tiger Clinic. And it is a school-based health clinic. But the four things that I get excited about when I think about our clinic and the availability to our staff and our students, one of them is primary health. This is a one-stop shop for our kids and our, and our staff, people at the buil, in the buildings. Also, people from transportation and around our, uh, particular community. And when I say community, I mean school community, not outside. And that is very important to understand. They did ask me that when we were talking early on, who's gonna have access to this? I said, the people in the building. That means our students and our staff. And if we have staff like bus drivers that need to come in and have access, we'll make sure they have access also. The second thing is the oral health. One of the things that we've had, um, uh, some concerns with, again, with our teach, with our kids, and we have had the dental bus, so that process will continue on, but it'll be under one big umbrella. When you think about, uh, the clinic itself, the school-based health clinic. The next thing is a vision. One of the challenges that I've, I've noticed since I've been here is that a lot of our kids, when they're having difficulty in the classroom, is usually because there may be a vision or re, uh, or seeing problem. A lot of times our kids are not able to articulate, I can't see, I can't understand, I can't make out their letters. So, again, we'll have an opportunity to do pretty much mass screenings of our kids early on to help identify those kids that are struggling with that. And then, uh, last but not least is the mental health. Ongoing issues, I'm, I'm, I was working with, uh, our counselor today. We have some, uh, students at the high school and middle school that we're working with. We're addressing it. We've talked about, again, as I've mentioned in the past, our school's safety plans. Kids can't come back to school if they're presenting a danger to themselves or to other kids in the building and to the adults. So we're, we're, we're really serious about that. And when we talk to the parents, we tell them, this is the medical documentation that we need for a release saying that child is able to come back. And even when they come back, they're not actually just walking into a classroom, so we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're protecting everyone in the building when we have kids that are in crisis, which is unbelievable at, during this time. So, again, wanted to finish up real quick by talking a little bit about our update. The grant that we're getting for, from the federal government is about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And this is for clinic operations. And that money is already in the bank with Coastal Community Health. Uh, we also have an additional grant that we're waiting on from, uh, CBS Aetna. And that grant is for about twenty-five thousand. So if you look at it, we got about three hundred ninety-five thousand, almost four hundred thousand dollars for the clinic itself. The great thing about it, these funds will be utilized for the operation of the clinic. So there is no funding whatsoever coming from the school district to fund this, this particular clinic. So all the staffing, all the materials, actually when we were in there, Mr. Masa, if you remember, she was asking us about equipment. They're gonna bring refrigerators in and lab equipment and things like that. That's all coming from, for them, from them to us for the benefit of our students. So if you walk by there, when everything's said and done, you'll see a little LabCorp box outside the, uh, clinic. It'll be outside on the corner, very hiding type place for it. And that's where they'll be picking up labs every day if kids are sick and we need to send something off to determine whether they have the flu or whatever it may be. The fourth bullet on there, I want you guys to look at. That clinic operational by January the twenty-fifth. That's that, that's our hundred and twenty-day timeline based on the, the conditions in the contract, the federal contract that we want. So that is something that we're very aware of and that has to be in place in order to meet the criteria for this contract to, uh, to move forward. Um, again, it's a hundred and twenty day. I told, I was joking with Mr. Masa this morning and I said, you know, worst-case scenario, we get that clinic open, you are our first patient. And I'm not sure if it's primary, but maybe mental health. But we'll, we'll take care of you. I wanted to finish by talking a little bit about patient access. And I can't emphasize this enough, and I've emphasized it to our partners at CCH, you'll hear me say, use their initials. And I can't emphasize this enough and I've emphasized it to our partners at CCH, you'll hear me say, use their initials. Um, this facility is for our kids and for the adults, anyone that wants to use Coastal Community Health. There is no referrals coming from the uh, two fifty-one location. Or the Townsend location or anywhere else, it is strictly for our school. If a parent needs services, we're gonna send them to the nearest clinic that's associated with CCH. So, again, it's very targeted and that grant is very targeted in saying, who are the kids, what are the schools and this type of thing that the uh, grant would be available for. So, as I continued to look around and, and think about some of the things that we needed as a school district, I looked at some of the things that we would have in our MOU and uh, we'll be us- utilizing Mr. Braun to help us put this together, but one of the main things is no community access. MCS retains ownership of the facilities and CCH is a partner with access to our facilities only. So, whatever they're bringing in, whatever renovations we're doing, this property still belongs to us and that will be in that memorandum of understanding. The third thing that I put down is the annual contract. We're gonna review that contract every October, November because it's an annual thing with the federal government for them to not only get, go through their review, but for us to uh, review it also. There will be an advisory board for our clinic. That is something that I thought about that needs to happen from the standpoint of patient input, teacher input, administrative input, maybe even have a board member on that advisory committee just so we can make sure that we're, we're following the guidelines. Again, they're gonna be looking at our rules about how we would operate a clinic and working with us based on some of the medical areas and things that they have expertise in, so again, we are in control of this even though they're partnering with us, it's a, it's a, it's a win-win situation for us. Um, the grant funding itself is gonna cover, like I said earlier, all of operating uh, facilities costs and we're gonna make sure that's in the, in the uh, MOU. And that if there is extras, that they're the ones that's taking up that particular cost. We don't anticipate more than what the grant is gonna cost us because they're gonna work with their internal costs, al- also with the doctors and people that they send over to us, but that is one of the things that I wanted to make sure of. And um, MOU, because it's an MOU, um, I wanna make sure that we have the option to terminate. If we don't like the way things are working and, and, and making sure that's in there, that there's at least a sixty or ninety day uh, termination clause that protects us in case operational facilities aren't living up to our expectations and we have an opportunity to say, "Thank you for what you've done," but we're gonna retain everything back and send you on your way. I don't anticipate that taking place, but again, this is our kids, our facilities and we have to make sure that we're taking care of our, our people in, in the buildings that they're utilizing, so again, this is something I'm excited about, one of the things that I did join, I joined the School-Based Health Alliance, it's a nationwide alliance and they provide a monthly newsletter, so I'm educating myself on kinda what are best practices when it comes to, to doing, uh, working with a school-based health center. So, real excited about it, I appreciate Mr. Moss and his help with the logistics and kinda working with our contractors. I am, as I said, waiting to hear back from Ms. Woods regarding this uh, Mr. Williams con- John Williams con- construction 'cause again, I wanna make sure that everything is checking out before we present anything with you guys. Um, the final um, renovation that we're looking at, we're, we're kinda looking at about two weeks before uh, we start renovations. But nothing will take place until we've had a chance to look at all the bids and, and make some decisions about things and presented it to you guys. Um, but I'm excited, we're ready to move forward and this is gonna be a game changer as far as our kids.
We already got other counties wanting us to hurry up and get it done because they're wanting to do one. They wanna see how it's working.
Yeah, Camden and Liberty.
And Liberty, yeah.
Uh, Liberty and I think it's uh, one other county, I forgot the name of, but those two names came up and I, I think part of it is that the word is out that we're about to move forward with this particular um, uh, facility and they're wanting to kinda know what's going on and how y'all are gonna do with that type of thing, so.
I think there was an important point that um, we should make also that Mr. McNair didn't mention was that it's not costing us anything and possibly some cost sharings that will actually free some money up in our budget, if you can mention that.
Yeah, yeah, there's an opportunity, when I did speak to Dr. Chandler, I said, "You know, we had these health assistants come into our school with the Department of Health grant that we received over, I think, three years, Ms. and uh, that money's running, going away." But the need for that health assistant is, is, is tremendous because of the fact that they're utilized in our building. I mean, it gives our nurses an opportunity to get paperwork done while the health assistant is assisting kids and vice versa. Playing this morning, Mr. um, was it uh, Charlie, our SRO, we were in a meeting with him about two hours ago and he was talking about how crazy it got this morning with the number of kids that came in with a hundred and three temperature that they had to turn around and send back. Our nurse is seeing anywhere from forty to forty-five kids in her clinic every day and that doesn't count the ones that are coming in just for medication that they get every day, so she sees about twelve to fifteen of those kids plus another forty kids that are in there for various reasons, injuries on the playground.
And Mondays are always a busy day.
Mondays, every Monday, she's been quitting for the last six months, but um, I told her I would get her additional help over there while um, Ms., our health assistant, uh, Ms. Isabel is out and so we'll be getting some additional help over to her, 'cause we, she's doing a great job and we definitely wanna keep her around. So, um, we're, we're looking forward to it, any questions for me about anything?
I may. And parents send their kids to school with a hundred and three fever?
Unfortunately, we've, this is not the, I mean,
Put them off.
This is pretty typical, unfortunately, it's pretty typical. One of the things I think CCH is gonna help us with is getting all, helping us get the medical documentation for us. Um, because what ends up happening a lot of time, Mr. Moss has made this comment, they come in, they're sick, we have the parent come and pick them up, they go home, they never see a doctor. They never take them, and I'm not saying never, but there's very few opportunities where they actually go to a doctor because the parents are working. Some of our parents are working two and three jobs, different shifts, single parents, so they're not taking them, they're just dropping them off, "I gotta go back to work." And then they come back to school the next day and they're still sick and they make other kids sick. So, again, we're, we're, we're trying to alleviate or reduce that happening as frequently as it does. But every Monday is the same thing, we have kids coming in.
They were like my father, um, my arm had to be fallen. And I'm sure there have been times I could have found relief with uh, some medication or something if it was a quick visit, but that just wasn't the the way it was back then and I'm afraid that there's a lot of that still in this world we live in now and not by any fault of the parent.
Right.
Being all the situations that come up, but man, what an opportunity.
Mr. McNair, you stated earlier that there would be a lab, a LabCorp box where they would come by and pick up labs? So, I know when you're in urgent care, and you may or may not know this, but um, when, if you walk into urgent care, you're imme- you can immediately be tested for strep, for flu, for whatever. Those immediate tests can be done there and they will show up whether you have flu or strep, okay?
Yeah, those type things, when it's something where a kid has been complaining about a particular issue that they can't determine what it is then, and the doctor's not available and, and there's not a nurse practitioner on there, they'll be able to send those labs out and get them back pretty quickly, so. That's, that's a good thing, 'cause she wanted to know, where can we put this box, 'cause we're gonna actually uh, have opportunity to send labs out and get them back pretty quickly. Um, so, there's, like I said, some opportunities for our kids to release. The one thing that I love about it is that every, every kid in that school will have an opportunity to have an annual, annual exam. In other words, they come through there and again, they're wa- they're not turning away anyone, everything is based on a, a, a graduated scale. They told me when it came to uh, cost, now if it's Medicaid or one of the Peach Cares or something like that, that'll just be billed internally and, and that'll be taken care of.
So, what about the dental division and the mental? Does someone have to come in different?
Yeah, there is, and I did ask about that on um, Thursday too. They have a um, a nurse practitioner that's, that has a behavior health background, somebody that's working in that particular area. I don't know if you, if you're familiar with uh, psychiatric nurses, but someone that's had that type of experience. She was saying that right now, based on where their um, staffing is, someone could come in from four to six hours a week. The only problem I had with it when she told me and I said, "Look, I'm not okay with taking kids out of classroom to see a therapist." I said, "Now, if there's some way we can work after school or before school hours or, you know, periodically over like a connection period where they're pulled out for thirty-five, forty minutes, I'm okay with that." But for that content area of courses and the classes that they're taking, we're gonna have to figure out how to make that work. Um, again, this is kind of a test trial with us, so we're gonna have to kinda see how that's gonna work. We do have that additional grant that I talked to you guys about with M- with the MOU for um, Coastal Community Health that we're doing after-school groups, that is still in play. Ms. Dee Barry actually sent me an updated list of groups that she's gonna be doing with another um, licensed counselor with CCH here in the next week or so. So, again, we have a lot of things going on, but the mental health piece is definitely something that we are very keen on. We met this afternoon with our SROs to kinda talk about some of the things that we're addressing within the school and um, things being documented. And I love the partnership because they're sharing with us some of their concerns and we're hearing about things that are happening in the community, so when those kids from those families come in our buildings, we kinda know how to support them without getting into confidential information or privacy issues. So, again, it's, it's gonna be a win-win situation for us when we start looking at this in a, in a big-picture scheme as far as what's gonna happen with our kids, so.
And so, they will be able to prescribe medicine?
Yes, yes, the nurse practitioner and the MD will be able to prescribe. We will not have medication here in our facility, but we will have Jet Pharmacy. And what, what I've gotten, I'm, I'm under the impression that it's more advantageous for them to work with local pharmacies because of their grant that they receive, I guess, credits or something from than actually work with a large pharmacy benefit provided like a CVS or a Walgreens. So, you're gonna probably see most of our kids and, and, and people here, unless they tell them, "I wanna go to CVS," which is over in Brunswick or somewhere else, the, most of the prescriptions will be coming from our local pharmacy and we have the ability to have those prescriptions delivered to the school, uh, like for, for the parents.
Right, and, and uh, that would probably be because some parents would just go home.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They, they wouldn't pick up a child's prescription and the child's still sick and they're suffering.
Help with those students that need medication on a daily basis and it's never, they never go pick it up.
Yeah, they cut it in half and try and make it last until, again, that, all that's gonna be worked on a graduated scale with uh, CCH. So, they have the health resources and know-how when it comes to utilizing the federal government's and the facilities um, out there, we're just really kinda going along with the ride and, 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 and getting all the benefits as a result of it, so.
So, do they have a special MOU with Jet Pharmacy? I mean, is there a specific reason that?
They, I, I'm not sure if they have a specific uh, MOU, I think MO, uh, Jet becomes one of their providers that they've negotiated with. So, there may be an uh, MOU in place with Jet because they're, that name keeps coming up whenever they talk to us also.
Well, I know, but, and we have two local pharmacies and it, and the, you know, we ask the community for support, so I, I would think it would be only fair to.
Yeah, they're gonna, yeah, they're not gonna be looking at, at a, a large pharmacy chain uh, when it comes to working with our kids. Now, again, the parents, whatever they can decide, "I wanna go and use this because I like CVS or Walgreens," again, we'll still write the prescriptions.
Yeah.
But when it comes to getting the medicine, have it delivered to the school.
They have a delivery service there at Jet, I think.
Yeah, they have a delivery, so that's one of the things that he was saying, they would deliver it to the school, so the parent was coming in to pick up their kid.
They can just pick up the medication also.
So, um, I know we started with our telehealth, um, about three years ago. We have taken that telehealth and taken it to another level, but the good thing about it, our kids at the other schools will still be able to benefit from the telehealth because we have the, uh, still have the equipment and uh, we'll still be able to work with those kids also. So, we do have the uh, equipment still able to work with the kids in the uh, middle and the high school. But our primary location will be here at Todd Grant, where, where we're at about six hundred and seventy-eight kids right now.
Six hundred and eighty-one.
Eighty-one.
Six hundred and eighty-something.
Eighty-seven.
And our, our kids from the high school and the middle school can come to this clinic?
Yes.
Yep, it'll be available to them.
And those teachers.
And the teachers too. The one thing they kept emphasizing to me when I was listening to them is this, this becomes almost like a one-stop shop. Most of our kids, because of their financial, emotional conditions, a lot of times, th- school is the place. So, when you think about school, it's not just a place to learn, it's a place to receive nourishment for your body and also to get the healthcare and stuff that you need, whether it be vision, primary mental or something along those lines. But it takes this health equity and kinda turns it upside down, it gives everyone access and not just a few. And so, you know, some parents are able to take them to Camden and Liberty County to get specialty care. Our kids will be able to get the same level of care, we'll just have it right here in our community.
So, what, so what becomes, um, how are we gonna vet who goes to the school nurse and who goes to the clinic?
That's a good question, the good thing about it is that not only will we have access to their nurses, but they're gonna be working in conjunction with our nurses. In other words, the training that our nurses will receive will be from like the nurse practitioner, if they're wanting to work on their skills. It won't be a question of, "Who's gonna see me?", they're gonna be working in conjunction. And I, I've looked at some MOUs and that's one of the things that they kept saying, the partnership, the clinic will do this, the school will do this. In partnership, the school will be wor- responsible for these management responsibilities, the clinic will be responsible for that. It has to be as detailed as, as that when you start looking at that MOU, so all the expectations are spelled out early on. And if there needs to be further clarification, that is documented in there. Um, the one that I was looking at over the weekend is about seventeen pages long and I went through everything and it covered everything, but there's opportunity for you to add addendums and things when it comes to contract times and things like that, so.
So, if I have a scratch on my knee, I go see the nurse.
Yeah.
If I go in with a, a high fever or short throat or whatever, then I'll get transferred over to the clinic.
No, no, when you say the.
I think everybody will see the nurse first and she will make a determination.
If they need to go.
Yes. Team at this point, there's no more, the nurse is one person and this is, no, they come in, they get checked in by a front desk secretary or a
Health assistant.
Health assistant. The doctor and the nurse are, are seen or their health, nurse practitioner, there's no separate, um, these kids get seen because they have, they're gonna see them and they'll work out the medical and the, the um,
Billing.
For if it goes above and beyond that, um, for the kids that are eligible to have Peach Care and all that, they work through all that, but everybody gets seen.
Yeah.
Cause billing, billing will be an issue we will discuss with them just because we wanna keep earning the money we've been getting from the billing that we do.
Make sure we keep the money and that if there's, there's some offset to where they're covering some of our costs, then we're able to make up the difference and that's what we were really focusing on, how can you help reduce our cost? And at the same time, help us deliver the things that we would need to, from the standpoint of our clinic, 'cause we pay for a lot of supplies also, don't we? We get reimbursed, but it's not a hundred percent reimbursement, you know, so again, there's some cost savings there too, so. Again, when we look at this MOU, we're gonna make sure it's advantageous for us.
Well, and I'm not, I'm not trying to sound like a jerk, but I want to hit this home. I don't want folks to go out here to the clinic on two fifty-one, "Oh, we can't see ya." We go to Todd Grant, we have the same clinic there.
I can assure you.
I want that to be for our children and our teachers.
That's why you're doing the MOU.
That's why we.
The MOU and notice, and when I pointed out, I started off with access, who is this available for? And I made sure that they were aware, my understanding, our understanding is that this is for our students and our staff.
No, he hit on it, but I wanna be.
No, 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 I agree.
Well, and you know, and if I go in, I have strep throat and my mama picks me up and I got five kids at home, well, come on in and we'll, you know, see you since we all have you right here.
Student here and your cousin's visiting you from.
Right, well, and you know, and that's the, you know, that's the thing that was, I was kinda concerned about was that, you know, we already aware of your situation and what's wrong with you, so let's just go ahead and get everybody in here and get everybody taken care of, you know, and then.
If your siblings in the same house and they coming from the same household or one's living with mom and one's living with dad and they live in our county and they go to our schools, they will be seen in our clinic. and they go to our schools, they will be seen in our clinics. People from outside this county, you know, they'll send them to the clinic or to the um, you know, two fifty-one location or somewhere else. Again, I can't emphasize enough, this is for our kids, our staff, for our benefit.
There's three other locations for those people.
That is three locations and.
We, and we've, we've had that discussion more than once. And um I, today, when he was talking to me about MOUs, we were going through one, and I said, well, I'm gonna reach out tomorrow to Dr. Price in Baldwin County, who's done this, she has a school-based clinic, I wanna see, I want her to send me her MOU.
Yeah, we need to.
Cause it's been very successful there.
Yeah, we need to compare the MOUs, kinda lis- listen to the pluses and minuses, some of the challenges that they have. Again, this is something that's very unique, something very innovative, definitely a game changer, but we wanna make sure we do it right. And um like I said, I'm, I'm even going as far, and I told Mr. Motson, yeah, we had this contractor come in, I don't know any, I don't know any contractors, but I need to find out about reputation, completion of jobs, what happens if I have a problem, something needs to come back, I need to know all of that, so.
And one other thing, Dr. Williamson, I talked about was, cause my other main concern was space for Mr. Um Mitchell to have for meetings and things. And since we're taking away his conference, one of his conference rooms.
We are building one, we are building him one, yes.
We are building one around the side, I think Mr. Motson went out and and talked to Mr., he's talked to both contractors so far about that space itself.
Yeah, we've got plans for an additional room that's um, if you can picture the cafeteria area where the students eat, and then there's some double doors that go right into the gymnasium, and there's an area there that's plenty big enough for us. A smaller conference room than what they have now, but a beautiful conference room that we can add, we can add there. And um Mr. Mitchell is tickled pink that people, he could use that, it'd be big enough for a nice table and a nice conference room.
Yeah, but how much would that cost?
It's all covered in the.
We're looking, yeah, we're looking at.
Five thousand, uh.
On the high end, I think it was thirty-five to like forty-five.
The twenty-five thousand that we got from CVS at now.
It would cover the clinic and the additional space from that, that grant.
We put all of it in one.
Oh, so, okay, okay, alright.
And I was telling Dr. Williams when we were in there in the conference room the other day, that Heath or somebody can condense that table.
Right.
And put it in the other.
We've, we've got um some plans for that, but he's already mapped out, both contractors gave us a bid, we just wanted to keep that separate, we wanna get the clinic done.
The clinic.
Get that taken care of, and then we'll address that, but there was um plenty of funding left over from that, twenty-five, if it was seventeen or eighteen. We've got plenty for that conference room, and we assure Mr. Mitchell.
When we sent the, the, when we sent our first bid in to the lady at CVS at now, she had already gotten twenty-five thousand approved. So that's what's on its way to us.
That's what I was talking about with the pending, yeah, she's, she's the director, she has to get all the check marks off. And she said, I'll send you an email once the check has been issued, and we've been in contact. And and one thing I like about her, she keeps saying, do y'all need anything else? And I said, we just need the check right now, once we get the check, we're good. That covers the renovation costs and the um update to the conference room over on the other side, so. And again, we still get to operate with the three six seventy clinic operations and everything, so.
Yes, space is a bigger question that we'll be addressing.
One more thing.
I'll be done.
No, you're good.
Are you gonna get a white coat out of this?
You know what? I feel like, I feel like I'm back in school, to be honest, would you come back up here? I might get one of these.
I was gonna say a straitjacket.
I might get one of those, but this is, this has been um very enlightening, and 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 like I said, there are not very many of these facilities around, around the country. Um so we're, we're kinda on the cut of, cutting edge of everything, I'm excited about it. I will keep you guys updated as we proceed through this entire process until Mr. Motson walks in as our first patient.
Well, and we're not trying to be difficult, I don't want you to think, because we've gone from, um when we first was told about this, when it was, they were talking about doing an oak grove, from being an exchange place for needles for drug addicts, to now just seeing our kids. I mean, that's, you know, we're trying to wrap our head around all of this because we were gonna be, you know, any mental person off the street could come in, they could come exchange their needles, they could, you know, pick up new needles, you know, and so that's what's.
Not at our clinic.
What was first, you know, presented to us. And so we're just wanting to make sure that that's not happening on our, our campus.
I can tell you this, if that MOU doesn't meet our expectations and the guidelines that I've talked about, and that I know we all want, then unfortunately, our facility will stay just like it is, and we'll continue to do what we can to serve our kids, but not gonna compromise.
We just, we talked about that today.
That's it. Once you put it in place, it's on them.
It's on them, but it's, but it's still our facility.
Oh, correct, that's what I'm saying, so they got to do what we ask.
Yeah, you dissatisfied them, we can say it's over and give them sixty to ninety days and be done with it. I don't know about giving them their equipment back, but.
By then, you'll know how to use it, won't you?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Marson, COVID?
I'm pleased to report that uh at this time, there was no reported cases of COVID in our system. But I will go ahead and say like I do every time that we still are with general health protocol and making sure that we're safe. And that, that's important to know, that everything we did for COVID only helps with the general flu.
I just wanna tell everyone in the room, I was at a family connection meeting Wednesday morning, and um the health nurse there, Paige, said that they have a new supply of COVID tests at the health department in Yalonia. And so when I left there, I walked in there and got five myself, just to take home for grandkids and whatever. So there's plenty of COVID test kits, if y'all pass by Yalonia, stop at the health department, ask them for some.
And you can go online, the government send, they send them to you. So, yeah, they're still sending them out, cause I got some mail to the house as well, so. You can, you can go online and they'll send them.
Alright.
Are there any questions on the next two? These are field trip requests for the one act play and a basketball Christmas tournament, that's our.
The one act play is in Alpharetta, and the basketball tournament is in Albany. And he will not be leaving until final exams are complete on that nineteenth day. I mean, on the nineteenth.
Alright, and we'll go into executive session for personnel issues. And then our next area, just, just an update on everything. From you, you want?
Are we going to executive session?
Um, yes.
I just need to tell you a couple of.
Okay, alright.
It'll be short, sweet.
Okay. We'll go ahead and go over these.
You wanna go over those?
Yeah, we'll go over all this.
So um our teacher externships, that is where um we were asked by GICA, actually, it was the Golden Isles. Is that a Chamber of Commerce? Is it the Golden Isles Chamber of Commerce? Anyway, they fund it, but GICA asked us if we would, could send two teachers, they do twenty in Glen County a year. Anyway, we've sent two, so we had Ms. Stutler from MCA and Ms. Dawn from the middle school go in October, it was October tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. And they, both of ours actually worked with the Jekyll Island Authority. So they go, externship means they go somewhere besides an education facility and work, so it was a great experience for them. We, Preesi and I got emails from both of them thanking us for letting them attend. Um trunk or treat was a success, thank you to those who came by and helped with that, and for Missy for doing a whole, she did a whole trunk, so. Um Santa Land is coming back from Darien Tail. Um I, some people might not be, Mr. Bregman might not be excited it's coming back. He is having, I think he's having fun creating the new scenery. So that, we'll be doing that in December, and we're doing it for, I I think, pre-K through second or third grade. So um we're excited about that. Uh the YMCA board, they have asked me to serve on that, like I didn't have enough to do, so I am gonna do that. Um and I, you may or may not know that they are looking for new facility in town, so that, that'll be something I'll share probably at the next meeting.
Who is that, that one, Boys and Girls Club?
YMCA, YMCA. Uh the Boys and Girls Club, I am on that board, and they currently have a hundred and thirty-one members attending every day, which is amazing. They have eighty-two in the pre-K through second grade program, I think that is a hundred percent increase from last year. I think they had about forty-something, I think that's what he told me. Um they had forty-seven come during fall break while we were out of school, which is phenomenal. And then they have been asked to apply for more Twenty-Fourth Century Grant, grant funds. They've had their site visit, so that's been pre-K through two. The guy told them you need to apply for three-five and for six-eight, and that would be an additional seven hundred thousand a year coming into that program, if they get it. So they're excited about that. And then, thank you to Georgia Power, we have seven people going to our, to the Ron Clark Academy. Ms. Riles is gonna be our leader for the district. And um then we've got Amy Hewlett, Chris Hutchison, Molly Lee going from MCMS, Leslie Popple, Mr. Harland, and Caitlin Fletcher going from MCA.
Where's this one?
That's at Ron Clark in Atlanta, the Ron Clark Academy. And Georgia Power is paying, Georgia Power is funding our people, and it pays for hotel, pays for registration, and one, I know, big dinner. I don't know what else it pays for, they're all, they all had to register themselves and take care of that, so. So we're excited.
What is the Ron Clark Academy?
Um Ron Clark is the guy that has the houses. He started in Atlanta, it was for um, and it was more of a poverty-based school. I haven't watched the movies, there is a movie with Matthew Perry.
Yeah, it was a poverty-based school, um that he, he worked with inner-city kids, and those that were low-performing kids, and gave their parents an opportunity to go to, you know, charter a private school. Well, one of the things that happened once he got him in, he had to make sure he got the right kind of teachers in. So every day is a different day truly in school, because the kids know that they're there to learn. When we talk about visible learning, he's almost like the originator of visible learning.
Okay.
Everything that he does is all about excitement, and he teaches using the mics, like with the music and everything. So you learn your multiplication table, you learn your multiplication song, so the kids can actually get up and do uh acts and dances based on the things that they do. But the school looks like, if you've ever heard or saw a movie or any interviews, look like it's high-octane all day long.
And they compete, they have houses that compete against each other, like they have different red, blue, yeah, whatever houses.
It is unbelievable what he's done.
It really is, and now, it used to be like, if I didn't get in as a, as a first-year student, then like next year I could apply. That's not true anymore, it's such a competitiveness about that getting in there, that once you're in, you have to stay in. But if you're not, if you don't come in at that ground level, you can't apply later. It's, it's, he has people from all over the country coming to look at his school. But there is a great movie about it, starring Matthew Perry, I just haven't had the chance, I saw it on TV like recently, so.
Okay, executive session, personnel.
And discipline.
Motion. Okay, motion by Ms. McDonald, second.
Thank you.
Mr. Hewlett, all those in favor? Okay, five oh, we will be back.
Elsa.
Okay, the Maybach County Board of Education adjourned to executive session to discuss personnel and student discipline. Can I have a motion to return to open session?
Motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Hewlett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Struggles. All those in favor? Motion carries five zero. Alright, any board comments?
I don't have anything.
I don't either.
I'm good.
You're good.
Be safe.
Ms. Bronn?
Nothing, be y'all next week.
Alright, we're adjourned.